Call this meeting to order. Could we get a call to, I mean, a roll call, please Pam?
Certainly. Mark Kittle.
Here.
Jennifer Riffle.
Present.
Auden Schindler.
Here.
Katie Schwer.
Here.
Bernie Grauer.
Yes.
Gary Tenenbaum. Jackie Witsett.
Here. Is Gary not coming, or does anyone know?
I've not heard.
Okay. Super. Okay, just so I don't forget this information. The Wednesday following our regular meetings, there is a coffee at Starbucks. I'm there, I can answer questions, talk to you, get other people to come with me if you want. Also, I want to introduce our videographer back there for grassroots. It's Chris Hansen. Hello, Chris.
Hello.
Are you just learning, or are you good at this?
Yeah, I'm just about there.
Okay, good, alright. Okay, our next item on this agenda is the consent agenda. There are a lot of things on here. Are there any items that anyone wants to pull up? For more information, to question, to discuss? Thank you, sir. Yes, Bernie.
Mayor, I move that the town council approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Code? Thank you. The next item is council comments, reports, disclosures, and other reports. Does anybody have anything they would like to share with Council, Bernie?
I would just like to remind my fellow council members and the public that tomorrow at 5:00 PM in the council chamber will be the Finance Committee meeting. This meeting is going to deal with some very important topics. One of the first is going to be the five-year financial forecast for the city. And I can steal the thunder a little bit by saying it looks quite good, quite positive. But to get the details and the assumptions, come here tomorrow. At that committee meeting, we will also discuss funding for the underpass. So I encourage everyone to attend.
Thanks, Bernie. Anybody else? Jen?
I'd like to comment on, was the color run this past weekend? The Basalt High School color run? Well, nonetheless, it seems like maybe there was a color run. And in Albany Park, there is a large circle of dye in the grass. And many, I just want to put it out to staff that there have been many comments from community members that their clothing, their dogs, everything is coming home pink. And so if our community members can be aware of not putting dye in our public parks, on the grass, that would be greatly appreciated. And yeah, maybe we can get the sprinklers on and wash it away.
Yeah, or a hose or something.
Washable?
Yeah.
Thanks, Jen.
I think it's indelible. No, just kidding.
That's good. Mark, do you want to talk about the fact that you golfed today in the rain?
No.
Wasn't that a fundraiser?
That was the Basalt Charity Classic, yeah. And it was a good turnout. The weather this morning was good, but it turned poopy this afternoon, so.
But he did it anyway, so. Anybody else? Hey, thanks, everybody. Our next item is citizen comments for items not on the agenda. Is there anybody who has any comments for items that are not on the agenda? We will take public comment on any of our other items. Yes, right?
Citizen comments?
Yes.
Heads up, just, we have ninety-five teams coming Saturday and Sunday to Crown Mountain. Judy and Boyd have stepped up and are helping us out with some details. We're the first event to be sort of looked at as a mass event. So just a heads up for anybody else that's wanting to do anything significant down there. It gets a little bit more demanding each time. But thanks to Roaring Fork Engineering and the backs down there. We've got emergency response plans, and traffic control plans, and parking plans, and field maps, and all kinds of stuff, so. But it should be pretty good. Two thousand kids and however many parents are attached to them, so. Just be careful when you go in and out of there, and watch out for the little guys. And it should be a good time.
It's a fabulous event. I've popped in a couple of times, but it's not a good day to walk your dog at the park.
No, it's not.
It's kind of cool to, I'm hosting a family from Breckinridge.
Oh, yeah? Yeah, good.
For the big tournament this weekend. It's kind of cool to just have that. There are so many people are coming.
Well, if you've got a lacrosse ball in your house, maybe you'll end up with a couple of broken windows.
Oh, I have a couple of them.
That's how we measure success, yeah. Alright, thanks.
Citizen comments for items not on the agenda. Yes, ma'am?
Hi, everybody.
Hello.
I'm Nancy Lovendahl from BPAC, as you remember. And I just want to share with you that we will be inaugurating our first public art project June 9th, which is also, as you've just noted, going to be Public Art Day in Basalt. Thank you so much for that. The artist is going to be here the week before, and we want to invite all of you to stop out and see the installations that'll be in five parts of Basalt. I'll send you information, and we just want to thank you for all your hard work in helping us get our first project off the ground. So thank you very much.
And just a correction, it's Saturday, June 10th.
So. You can tell that I am no longer the Chair of BPAC for certain obvious reasons. We are also having a June 9th celebration with Art to BF. So maybe that's what I have in my mind. So if you can make it for the art openings on Friday night, we'll be standing and getting everyone to get their bikes decorated for June 10th.
We have a lot of things on our mind, all of us.
Thanks, Nancy. Thanks again.
Thank you, Nancy.
Last call for citizen comments, items not on the agenda. Okay, thanks, everybody. The next item is council consideration of public hearing and consideration of financial feasibility of TAC. Bruce Kimmel and Susan.
Okay. I have to put Bruce on the phone, so just give me a second here. And Ryan, why don't you come on up and sit here? And anybody else from TAC?
I'll share with you.
You guys are going to have to share.
Sure. Wow, that's a hot mic.
Hey, Ryan.
Yeah?
If you end up speaking, if you guys can share, you can share that mic.
Yeah. Get into it, yeah?
So Bruce, we're just doing a sound test. Can you guys hear Bruce? Okay, great, perfect. James, there's another slide before this one, actually, that you could pull up. So this is a public hearing, and the purpose of this is really to look at the feasibility of the arts campus at Willets and to determine the next steps. And what I'm going to do is just kind of lay out the framework for the meeting. And then we're going to have Bruce Kimmel, who's on the phone from Ellers. Bruce is going to summarize the findings of the ICG report. And then Ryan Honey is going to give us a status of some of the efforts of TAC and how they're responding to some of the comments that were made in the ICG, ACG's report. And then I'm going to circle back and give you more detail on kind of the deal points that were included in your packet. Then we'll actually go to public hearing. And in here, during this part of the discussion, I think it's fair to have questions and answers as long as we're really not talking about the substance. And when I say questions and answers, it's just really short questions. I'm not getting into a lot of deliberations. And then we'll have the public hearing, and then council discussion and a motion. So I think that everyone's a little bit familiar, very familiar with the council in terms of the efforts that we've had in the past with TAC. We passed a resolution last fall called Resolution Number 41. And the purpose of that resolution was really to kind of set a framework for how TAC could move forward, be guaranteed some funding from the town, and kind of what would happen, when would the council kind of make a decision that was okay to lease the property. So there are kind of two, there were several important pieces of that resolution. But one of them had to do with having an independent financial analysis. And back in January, the town council, after staff and Bruce Kimmel had sent out a request for proposals, had selected ACG to do that report. That report is in, and that's the main reason that we're here. And that resolution said that after the report was conducted, that the town council would have a public hearing and determine if it was appropriate to move forward with the leasing of the property. That's what we're doing tonight. And what we've done in your packet is to kind of lay out two pieces. One piece is kind of based on ACG report. The ACG report, and Bruce will go into more detail, but basically, they were very positive about TAC moving forward. And they recommended that the town proceed with leasing the property to TAC. And this, and so one big piece of staff's recommendation and Ellers really has to do with a lease. That I'll circle back on when I do the deal points. The other one had to do with the funding. Resolution Number 41 said that cumulatively total, we agreed to give TAC $230,000 to work on the financial fundraising effort and putting their program together. And then we'd have this public hearing and decide how to move forward. So really, kind of simplistically where we are on that money is that it kind of takes us through June, maybe a little bit into July for their funding. And that's the other kind of piece that I'll be talking about after Bruce Kimmel gives his report. So maybe with that, I'll turn it over to Bruce to talk a little bit more about the financial feasibility report that the town had conducted and what it said. So Bruce?
Sure, thanks, Susan, and good evening, everyone. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah, Bruce.
Great. So as Susan mentioned, the town engaged Arts Consulting Group to look at the overall plan for TAC, including the financial feasibility of the plan. And the scope of work was a little bit unique, and it's a unique project. But it was unique in that the town really asked ACG to review everything that had been done to date, both by JBA and the market study that they had done a couple of years ago, as well as looking at TAC's own five-year plan, its business case, its donor, or its fundraising plan, and other elements relating to the proposed development. And so I hope you've all had a chance to look at the final report. And that, we've looked at a number of reports, and the final report was dated May 3rd. And, you know, I think that ACG did reach some meaningful conclusions about TAC's readiness to take the next step, and the appropriateness of the town moving forward with a lease and a common understanding as to next steps. As you probably saw, they looked at a number of different elements of the TAC plan and evaluated them on a scale from one to five. And most of those evaluation points were pretty positive in terms of the preparation that the TAC group has done to get to this point, and the thought that has gone into the programming ideas and the physical facility and other elements of the plan. They did look, they did caveat a fair number of their evaluation points by saying that they recommended that TAC undertake further market analysis to look at, to better look at the audience and likely audience participation for the programming that they're proposing, as well as competitive analysis that would look at competing venues and programming providers throughout the valley, just to have a better sense of what they'd be up against, what TAC would be up against in terms of programming and providing a venue space. But they didn't think that, in spite of thinking that, you know, they would need more information to really, to come to a final conclusion as to the feasibility of the TAC plan, they didn't think that that precluded the appropriateness of the town entering into a lease with TAC. And I think from our reading, and I've had a number of discussions with ACG about their plan and their methodology, and have prodded them a few times for some more clarification and details in various parts of the plan. But I think I would concur that the ACG report served provides a central level, a central threshold of feasibility, saying, TAC has done their homework. There's a long way to go in terms of fundraising, and in terms of further refining and finalizing the fiscal plan and the programming plans, and building both the audience and the donor base to be successful. But I would basically concur with ACG's analysis that they've gotten to a point where it makes sense to move forward with the next step. The last thing I would note is that, I think fairly interesting analyses done on demographics, and some questions that were raised about the unique demographics of the Mid Valley versus down towards Glenwood and up towards Aspen. And so I would recommend that you all look at that section and, you know, form your own conclusions and ideas about that. And then there was a fairly specific recommendation that TAC take a look at the ramp-up that is estimated in terms of programming, and perhaps find a way to moderate the assumed ramp-up so that it doesn't put itself in a position right out of the gate in terms of trying to do too much without having the experience and protocols in place to be successful in doing that. So I thought those were two appropriate cautions and things that TAC would be well-served in considering going forward. But why don't I stop there and ask if you have any questions about my reading of ACG's report? Or I know Susan has also been involved in quite a few of these discussions with TAC as well, or with ACG as well.
Any questions so far?
So maybe this is a good time to turn it over to Ryan. And Ryan, you have so many members from your board here. So if maybe you could introduce everyone that's here representing the arts campus, that would be great.
Okay, sure. I'm Ryan, Ryan Honey, I think I know most of you. I've got Jody Edwards here, who's been a great help to us. Julia Marshall is our Board President. Michael Lippken, our Board Treasurer. Jeff Orsak, Secretary of the Board. Lauren Jenkins is here, who's a board member. Wendy Hahn is a board member. Dick Carter is a board member, and lots of other friends of TAC that are here. I'll start by just saying thank you to the Board for your ongoing effort on our behalf, for the time you're spending on this project as we try to move it forward. I'm grateful for your time and for your effort. I'll also share that obviously the Board and I are very pleased that ACG's report recommends moving forward with a lease. We're also very pleased that it validates our pro forma. Obviously, we're excited about that. But prior to jumping into the discussion about next steps, which I know Susan is going to lead, I'd like to just take a moment to highlight some of the accomplishments that have been made possible in part by the support the Town of Basalt has given so far to this project. I prepared a report for you that is in your packet, and the accomplishments are listed there. But I want to just highlight a couple here. To date, we've secured over 400,000 in commitments to the arts campus project. And that effort is ongoing and expected to ramp up following the approval of a lease. We've done extensive implementation of nonprofit best practices, including in governance and accounting, which was critical. We've developed a comprehensive five-year plan, which, as I mentioned, was validated by ACG. We also completed architectural design for the eventual Performing Arts Center that we intend to build, and did a cost analysis of that build-out and have a cost estimate for that that's been completed. We have a robust capital campaign plan that we stand by ready to execute that was also validated by ACG. And we've created a case for support that we think is very compelling. So those are some of the highlights that we've accomplished to date that I think are worth mentioning. And the Board and I are extremely proud of all these achievements, but we also recognize that it's time to take the arts campus to the next level and take actions that help us achieve our mission, which is to further define the cultural identity of the Mid Valley by presenting and producing cinematic, performing, and culinary arts events. So with that in mind, I want to share some exciting news that we have. We've been working on pop-up programming and the planning for pop-up programming for some time, long before even I got here and before the ACG report. Pop-up programming has been something that was anticipated as part of the arts campus's effort before we had a permanent home.
Excuse me?
Yes?
Could you define it for the public?
Yes, certainly. A pop-up programming would be any programming, in our definition, that we do, not in our permanent home. So that's how we've come to define pop-up programming. And as we've explored opportunities to do that, there's very limited opportunities to do that in the Mid Valley. But recently, we were fortunate to have the opportunity to take up residence temporarily in a space in Willets. We've been working with Mariner closely, and they've been very supportive of our efforts. And we're pleased to announce that this summer, we are planning to open a temporary space, which we are calling The Temporary, in Willets, where we will start to serve the community and commence with artistic programming right away. So I think this is a huge step forward for us and helps to address some of the difficulties in quantifying the opportunity that ACG noticed. Is there a market? Is there a donor base? And how do we ramp up programming? The Temporary allows us to do all of those things in a way that mitigates risk for the arts campus, for the Town of Basalt, and for our donors. There is a promotional deck also included in your packet that has some information about the Temporary. And I, of course, am happy to answer questions about that. But we really think this is a unique opportunity for us to build our donor base, build an audience, and ramp up our programming. It'll be a critical stepping stone for us. I'll just conclude by saying that we're really pleased that this summer, it looks like the arts campus is going to be able to achieve two milestones. And the first milestone would be completing a lease with all of you. And the second milestone would be, of course, opening of the Temporary. And then taken together, we believe that these successes will allow us to bring compelling imaginative artistic programming to our community right away, and galvanize support for a permanent home. And in short, will allow us to take tangible and immediate steps to achieve our mission. So we're really, really excited about where we are. We're grateful for the support you've given us and continue to give us. And we look forward to continuing this partnership to bring more performing arts to this community. So with that, I'll open it up to questions.
Questions?
Yeah, I'd like to first focus on funding, and maybe Judy has some of the answers. What's in the TAC fund right now that can be spent on a non-recreation, some kind of community arts performance center? Do we know?
Sorry.
Nine hundred thousand.
Nine hundred thousand. Now, does that include the distributions we've made of about 190,000?
So it includes, but not 2017? And Susan has, Susan and I went over all these numbers, so you might have, but. So it's got 2016 revenues. It does not include anything that we've promised for 17.
Okay, and isn't that in the about, the amount of 40,000?
Well, the entire thing was more like 140,000, is that what you said? Because we had the ACG, out of that fund comes the ACG report. It comes from the work that Bruce Kimmel's doing, and the remaining money that was remaining from the 230. So without Bruce Kimmel, it was about 140,000, I think, was being subtracted in.
Well, in 2017, what would be subtracted from the 900?
I'll do that, I'll answer in the latter part of that. So that's okay. So I don't have to do my math in real time.
Yeah, okay, but that's something I would like to know that gives us a base. And let's see, Ryan mentioned 400,000 in commitments. Could you precisely characterize those commitments?
Certainly. We have two six-figure gifts in those commitments that are contingent upon completing the lease with the town. And candidly, as we speak with prospects for this campaign, there is a great deal of interest, but the consensus, for the most part, is, you know, come back when you have a lease, and we're certain that this is moving forward. So we have been able to secure a couple of significant gifts towards the project with the contingency built into the gift agreement on those. And then we also have some significant funding starting to come in through our Founder's Initiative, which is to bring in some donors to help us kickstart this endeavor. And so we've secured some of those. And happy to report, we actually secured another one yesterday, which was very exciting for us. So go ahead, Bernie, sorry.
I just wondered, are those donations, gifts, or these executed signed documents?
Yes.
Okay, so these are signed pledges, okay. But you say they are contingent on a lease being signed.
That's correct. In those two large gift agreements, we did include language stating that, obviously, if we didn't have a lease on the parcel, there would be no reason for them to give us that money to build a center on a parcel we couldn't utilize.
So then to follow on that.
Sure.
That line, these pledges, are they for, what are they for specifically?
Those pledges are for the building primarily. There's portions of them that can, but the Founder's portions of those can go to operations. But those, the bulk of those are earmarked for the capital project. Now, the Founder's Initiative is designed to give us operational capital for the next few years to, you know, to make sure that we can run and operate smoothly. And that's the initiative that we're rolling out and ramping up currently.
And what's your roundabout general number for operations that you've raised?
Well, so the goal for operations specifically, it's, I'd have to give back the exact numbers. It depends if you want to look how many years out you want to go, because we have done a board give-get, which you could, you know, count on the three-year terms and go out from those. But we've raised about $80,000 to open the Temporary on top of the operational spending that we spent in 2016, which is about $36,000. So roughly about 120,000.
Great, thank you for sharing.
If I could just ask everybody, just ask them, well, please, yeah? Other people, other questions?
Are you going to give us more detail of why you came up with this temporary idea and what you think the advantage to TAC and the town would be in operating it?
Absolutely. As Bruce pointed out, there's sort of three things in the ACG report that are identified as difficult things to quantify in this opportunity. Those are, is there a market for this? Is there an audience for this? Is there a donor base that will support this? And can we, as a Board and as a staff, ramp up our programming to our goal of 200 events per year? Those are the three key takeaways. We've looked at pop-up programming since day one, but the Temporary allows us to do all three of those things organically. ACG recommended further study, and we believe taking action is a better way to go. It mitigates the risk for the town and for the arts campus and for our donors by starting on a smaller scale, building an audience, building a donor base, and ramping up our programming. So we will have a seamless transition into a permanent home. The Temporary will be located just a block and a half from where the permanent center will go. And so we, you know, we will be able to move our audience base, our donor base, and our operations down the street and have a much more fluid transition than what would have been anticipated had we just done occasional pop-up programming here or there at other venues, and then opened the center. So those challenges identified by ACG, we feel like the Temporary really allows us to answer concretely.
I would just say that what really stuck with me is that this idea of a Temporary and starting some performance stuff.
I can't wait.
Is the smartest thing that you could possibly do. There are some questions that are in the study that I think you're addressing pretty clearly. But one of them that was mentioned is starting small. And I know that's what this is, this Temporary is starting small. But for instance, the Roaring Fork Conservancy, you know, I think they initially had a much bigger build-out plan, and it may still be a better, bigger build-out plan, but they were going to start structurally smaller. And I'm wondering if you've given that any thought?
Well, I think what we learned from programming the Temporary Well, I think what we learn from programming The Temporary in terms of what programming is resonating with audiences, what the Valley is receptive to, can help us inform our design. I think we have a terrific design and that was validated in the ACG report. We got high remarks or high scores for the overall design of the building. But real data from our real audience will help us determine if the design needs to be fluctuated or changed. And fortunately, we have professionals on our board who are providing those services at no cost, which is tremendous, and we want to get it right. And the information that we gather by operating The Temporary will allow us to do that and we have the skill sets on the board to make those changes if the data indicates that we need to do that.
And Susan, could you remind us the terms of the lease?
Well, I'm going to get to that next. When we're done with questions and answers, I'm going to go through the deal points on the lease and then on the funding piece, too.
Jennifer, so I have a question regarding from the ACG report. It recommends that Takah consider sharing its fundraising plan with the town, providing fundraising targets identified for the capital project, as well as donor targets for the ongoing operations of Takah. We don't have that in the packet. Would you provide that or will you...
I'd be happy to do that. My only caveat to that is I want to make sure that all donor information is, remains confidential and I don't want it to end up on the public record because obviously that information is sensitive and some people choose to remain anonymous. So we'd have to, and this is what I did with ACG, I did private sessions with them to review that, but I'm more than happy to do that individually. Perhaps Tom can indicate the best way to do that, to protect the donor's privacy, but absolutely, we are happy to do that.
Okay, yeah, I don't need names or anything. It's more, what's your plan?
Oh, yeah.
I haven't seen what Takah's plan is and it's, that's my main question of looking forward of, should the town go into a lease agreement? Well, if I don't know what your five-year plan is, it's difficult.
Yeah, I want to highlight a couple quotes in the ACG report because candidly, it was, it's a, it goes back and forth a little bit on the fundraising piece, so I just, I've highlighted a couple of sections in that. And again, I'm happy to sit down with you and walk you through it the way I did with them and I'm very confident in our campaign plan. But I'll just highlight a couple of quotes on page six. It says, "ACG believes that Takah could succeed with their fundraising efforts as assessed in the early phase in the project's development." There's also, I'll just give you one more regarding fundraising. This is on page fifteen. "ACG is impressed with the level of detail provided in Takah's five-year plan, which logically and strategically outlines a path forward." So I think they've seen these things and they feel pretty confident about them. And the last one I'll just share, I'm sorry, one more from page twenty-four. "The ACG team did review Takah's fundraising plan and has confidence in the fundraising strategy that has been developed. However, until the Takah project moves ahead with a lease for the site, testing the market's appetite for funding the capital project as well as supporting the ongoing operation will be unclear." So they believe in our plan but recognize that we need to have the partnership with the town formalized to execute it. But again, I'm happy to, like I did with them, walk you through the campaign strategy and the plan.
And as well, ACG recommends completing a market, audience potential, as well as a competitive analysis.
Mm-hmm.
Is that something that the art base is working on? Or, excuse me, Takah is... Well, good competition, that's where I'm feeding you along to.
Jen is here and we try to always keep each other abreast of what each other's doing because we do want to collaborate. Yeah, so certainly, our numbers we use in our pro forma are based on the best available statewide data for Colorado arts participation and we use very conservative estimates on those. Certainly, another large study from ACG would probably refine those numbers, but candidly, I think a better investment is in The Temporary and demonstrating that we can do this. I think there's, you know, there's a chance to spend a significant amount of money with another consultant or with ACG to get further study and I am more inclined to bring some artists here that are going to appeal to this community and start serving our community. So at this time, we're focused on opening The Temporary and demonstrating success as opposed to showing it on a piece of paper.
Susan, it sounds like you have additional information because I keep asking questions that you're saying are coming later. Would it be a good idea to do some more presentations so that we maybe are...
Sure. Sure. So what you're looking at up on the screen is staff and Lers' recommendations and there's really six of them. They're in your packet, so you can look on your screen there, too. But, you know, the first one is just based on the information available to date. We're recommending that the council conclude that there's a reasonable success, a reasonable opportunity for Takah to be successful and that we should move forward on the lease. That's really what number one is saying. So we're looking for the town council to end up, end concluding that, making that part of their recommendation. The second part of that is there should be performance standards in the lease. We're kind of identifying that this is very similar to what we did with the Roaring Fork Conservancy. I'll get to what those performance standards are next. The third point just has to do with the schedule. So we're proposing that the lease be considered at the next council meeting, which is May twenty-third, and the second reading of the lease would be on June thirteenth. Number four really has to do with, we identified some other points that we thought should either be in a lease or maybe in a separate agreement. I could touch on those in more detail, but they're really geared in a couple different ways. One of them is just to make sure that the Arts Campus at Willets is kind of integrated into the overall arts community of the Town of Basalt, that it, you know, it offers opportunity to display art from the art base in the center, that if the Basalt Public Arts Commission is doing kind of a town-wide effort at public art, like they're doing this time, that Takah display one of the pieces there. And it's also, you know, maybe more importantly, or equally importantly, we're recommending that the town seek amendments to the existing real estate transfer assessment and I'll touch on that in a little bit. Five is that at the same time that we're looking at the lease, we want to have kind of a separate funding agreement that kind of addresses how we should move forward in providing the arts Rita money to Takah. Now, in the original resolution, when we spoke to this portion of the real estate transfer assessment, that particularly, very specifically has to be used on this parcel in Willets, we termed it the Arts Rita. So if I say Arts Rita, I'm talking particularly about that real estate transfer assessment. So five is just, we want to have a separate agreement that it drills with funding. And then six is just the schedule for that resolution. And even though a resolution itself is, you know, can be handled at one meeting, we thought we'd handle it concurrently at the meeting that we're talking about, the lease. James, you want to just show the next page? The next page is just a, kind of a simple piece of this piece that's in your packet. I just took a bunch of words out. It's just kind of saying the deadlines that would be in the lease. So the lease would be like a five-year lease, similar to what we did at the Roaring Fork Conservancy. They'd have till July of 2018 to get their final land use approvals for the first phase, whatever that first phase is. Then they would have two more years, July of 2020, to get their building permit. And then they would have two more years from that, which would be 2022, to get their CO. So it'd be a five-year lease. Once they had the CO, then the lease would run ninety-nine years. And, you know, again, we kind of had at the bottom of that page in your packet, we kind of had some of these other deal points, which just had to do with, you know, some of these items that we would like, we'd like either in a lease document or another document. And, you know, I did have the opportunity briefly to talk to Jenna Mo from the art base and one of the things that I didn't mention is just scheduling and somehow we need just to have a good mechanism. For the most part, we all coordinate together currently in terms of events and things that are going on in town. We know when Modio's the same day as the art show, which is the same day as the movies, but we know that and we kind of get our timing appropriately. And I think that's something also that the art base would like, somehow that we have that so that, you know, when they have their second Fridays, which is a big deal for downtown, which is the art walk, that we don't have the biggest production of the year at Takah.
Can I just chime in? Susan and I just want to share, Jenna and I meet regularly. We had coffee before this meeting and I think I can, for Jenna as well, we're committed to collaborating and coordinating at every available turn. Both of us are committed to seeing an arts economy emerging in Basalt and that starts with two robust nonprofits, one focused on performing arts and one focused on the visual arts. But Jenna and I are committed to collaboration and working together and the easiest form of that is coordinating those schedules. So that's something that actually with The Temporary, we'll start doing right away. So just want to share that.
And she does concur with what you're saying when you're not around.
You know, the next piece is maybe a little trickier and that is that we're recommending that we seek amendments to the existing Declaration of Restricted Covenants, which are the rules for that Rita. And I think the council's very aware that at prior meetings, we have a lot of struggle about the current language and how the Rita funds are going to be used. And we're suggesting that, you know, before we move too much further, that we amend that. And by way of example, it's pretty specific that the funds have to be used to build, maintain, endowed, an arts center or cultural center on the arts parcel. So it kind of causes a problem when we want to have, by way of example, performances on another site. Another question that's come up in the past is whether the salaries for the managing director should be eligible to come out of the Rita. And I'm suggesting that those are policy questions that the town council maybe better operate under and that we should change the Rita. That's something that we can't do with them. It's really with the developer of the Willetstown Center. But I want to flag that. And then there was another issue, just making sure that our permitted land uses on that side are, give us the flexibility in the future if we want to put an ISIS in the center or something, that we're not doing an interpretation, that we make sure that we kind of gear everyone up to success.
Susan, can I interrupt just one second? This is like a fire hose of information?
Yep.
And it's a complex and it's financial and it's a lot. Are there things that we really need to prioritize in order to get the lease going versus changing the Rita versus...
You know, I would say the thought, this schedule of, because you're going to have an opportunity in the lease to actually see it in two different meetings, but I think if you could kind of weigh in on, yeah, this makes, this kind of makes sense in terms of the timing that we're giving, that we're kind of presenting to you, that it's similar to, like I said, similar to the way the Roaring Fork Conservancy, they have an opportunity to get their land use approvals, they have an opportunity to get their building permit, they have an opportunity to get a CO. Once they get a CO, then basically we're locking in that they get to have the site for, you know, a ninety-nine-year lease. And if they fail, you know, they are in violation of the lease and there's, you know, a series of actions that happen. Of course, they can always come back and try to explain why they are, you know, in difficulty. This should give them enough time. This is way more time than, you know, if I told Takah that they weren't going to get final land use approvals till 2018, they would probably be very upset. This gives them a little bit of flexibility to, you know, respond to things that can come up.
So one more clarification. There's a table here on, I don't know what page it is, potential requirements for lease. And it says land use approvals, deadline July one, 2018.
Yep.
Okay. Is there money tied to these things?
No, this is just the lease.
If you're in compliance with the lease, you're doing these things.
Right.
If you're not doing these things, you're not in compliance with the lease.
Right. The next piece has to do with the money. So we separated it and I probably should have made that clear. You know, originally, we were going to merge them and then we decided, kind of the team, Bruce Kimmel and myself, and that it's better just to separate the lease from the funding.
So the other one is this one?
Funding and I'm going to get that next.
Okay.
Okay, but anybody have any questions on the lease?
Anybody have any questions? Yes, sir, ma'am.
So when it comes to the lease, I feel that The Temporary is answering one of my major concerns, which has been all along. When are we going to see some Takah programming? When will Takah interact with our community to see what our community wants and needs and can support and is interested in? And so I think that that's a great step forward. I think that it's indicative of how many of our beloved, long-term nonprofits have started, in which they've started small and they've worked with the community and they've listened to the community and they've grown incrementally with community needs. And I think that The Temporary is an opportunity for Takah to listen to the community and to have more of an authentic genesis. So then how does that play into these lease dates? I feel like one summer in which you're potentially starting August first doesn't give you that level of information. Basically, what you're equating to what ACG is saying is that market study. Well, you're starting the market study August first. We know we've got off-seasons. I don't know what your plans are, like long-term. Is that a full year or is that just...
We'll be programming year-round and we actually feel like the shoulder seasons are some of our greatest opportunities. There's less happening in the Roaring Fork Valley to compete with and we feel very strongly that's an opportunity for us to take advantage of that and serve the community and create community in our space. So we will be programming year-round and in fact, we feel like the shoulder seasons are a real opportunity for us.
Okay. But I feel that one year is not enough to fully understand our community. When we look at a July first, 2018 deadline of looking at land use approvals and then looking at building permit in two years, it just seems like it's a very rushed process, at least to me, looking at, again, nonprofits that have been here for twenty to fifty years and how they've ramped up their programming, which would be another question that I have for you and that is your plan for ramping up programs from the, I believe, like the eight to ten you plan to have relatively soon versus the hundred and eighty to two hundred and forty. So that would be my concern about these deadlines and I understand what Susan's saying, like you want to have some fundraising perspective and from the town council that we're moving forward with this process, but I just am concerned about the too much, too fast and making sure that it is a success for the town and our citizens and Takah and that it seems really fast and ACG is kind of hot and cold throughout their report, in my opinion. Like they're like, it's awesome, but, it's awesome, but. And at just every single point, I'm like, I'm not really sure what they're trying to convey, other than caution perhaps. So...
I would disagree with caution. I think they come up pretty strongly in favor of this. I think no good consultant would not recommend further study because they're consultants. But I think if you really dive into this, I think they're behind this. They believe strongly that it's appropriate for the town. They say specifically at one point that the scope and scale of it, not the temporary, the permanent facility, is appropriate for our community. And I do think, you know, this conversation about hearing and listening to the community is one that we can have on an ongoing basis. I wouldn't advocate slowing down the timeline because I think we're only, at The Temporary, we'll be limited in what we can offer. It won't be a full slate of what we can, of what we intend to offer in the permanent facility, just because of the logistics of what the facility has in it. But it will give us a great deal of data and my impression, and granted, I've only been here a year, but getting integrated with the creative community here, seeing what's out there, there's a real vacuum in Basalt for performing arts, for cinematic arts, and I think we can fill that. I look forward to having more conversations about the appropriate ramp up, but I think this community is ready.
Well, and I completely understand what you're saying, but I feel like the ACG report does have a cautionary, cautionary tail woven throughout it. So we'll just have to disagree on, agree to disagree on their tone there. But thank you.
Okay, yeah, Jennifer.
I'm not sure where you're getting the one year. That's just the date by which we're supposed to have land use approvals. That's not when, you know, The Temporary would be closed down and we would move into the new building. That's five years away.
Right, I understand.
So I've got to believe that in a period of five years before the certificate of occupancy, a whole lot more data would be able to be, it'd be more along the path you're talking about, I think.
I still think it's a very aggressive path to have a CO in five years. That's my opinion again.
If we see...
Looking at the beloved, long-term... Looking at the beloved, long-term, successful nonprofits that exist up and down our valley. They have 20 to 50 years of history in which they may never get a large-scale building and yet they still are, they have great success.
I think this is a conversation we can continue when we start to have some metrics from the temporary in terms of how our audience is doing, how our donor pool is growing. But I think the facility as proposed, the permanent facility, is as small as it can be to host the kind of acts that we think the Roaring Fork Valley should be able to draw. So I think it is, it's a little bit of an apples-to-oranges comparison because to program this kind of artistic programming, it requires a space like this. So keep that in mind.
So let me ask a quick question. The metrics that you're talking about, is that somewhere in the, like, keep coming back to us kind of information of this is how well we're doing at the pop-up? So that, to kind of address?
I would say, Jackie, probably, I love data. So I'd be happy to share as much of it as you want to see. But we'll certainly have fundraising reports we can give, ticket sales, patrons served, repeat customers, all these kind of metrics.
That's great, that's great. We love death by data.
Great. I'm going to kill you.
And I think the other point too is this about this arts economy is that when people go to events, they also go out to dinner. And so it's really taking note of what an event will do and how it will energize a place. And so that's part of the data that we're seeing that we would like to collect.
And we're also talking about coordinating with, we already are coordinating with Capital Creek Group Pub and we want to coordinate with Metzaluna and other vendors to figure out the best times for our programming and when we're operating to maximize their business and their economic impact. So I will, I will track every data point that I can and be happy to share that with you.
So I'm going to go back to Susan here.
Yep.
We've got some other important items also. What would you suggest we wrap up with?
Yeah, I'm going to wrap up with, I'm going to spend just a few more minutes going through how the money piece works. And then if we could just maybe have some general direction. Because remember, I think the most important thing is we're not trying to resolve everything tonight because we're kind of setting it in motion. And I certainly flagged Katie's kind of question. And if we have time at the end, maybe other people could kind of flag if they...
You know what I'm just remembering? This is a public hearing.
It is a public hearing. So let me wrap up and like, let me wrap through the money piece.
Okay.
Five, seven, does that work? So James, show the next slide. I think it's important here that we don't get totally in the weeds. Okay, so I'm just going to generally kind of tell you what the ideas are here. And the first one is just, A has to do with, let's let Takah get through the summer, the high season, kind of with their effort towards fundraising in addition to the $230,000 that we allocated for them. Let's, should we allocate another $36,000? That would take them through September. That's the first piece. The second one has to do with, hey, that's a kind of a funny noise, Bruce, so we're just going to monitor that.
Who's going to monitor it?
B is saying that for every million dollars' worth of signed pledges or some type of the commitment from the donors, that the town of Basalt will set aside $100,000. So 10% of that. And we put that money in a trust account. Now, I know there can be a lot of different questions about the trust account. But the idea of the trust account was to take this money and put it in a particular kind of bank account for the arts campus at Willets, where at a certain point in time, that money goes to the arts campus at Willets. It's no longer under the jurisdiction of the town of Basalt. But we're suggesting that the money goes in at these, you know, $100,000 increments. And that at the time of building permit, that the trust account gets turned over to the arts campus at Willets. Now, one more thing, because the important kind of piece of this is we were trying to answer the question that came up repeatedly with the Roaring Fork Conservancy is how do you make sure that you have money to operate the facility? How do we make sure that the arts campus isn't a beautiful building, but they come to the town of Basalt and ask for money after the facility is built? So this was really kind of an attempt to get at that question. It happens in cities all over the United States where they built these centers. And then, you know, there's no operating expenses. What we did do is we, and it's, you know, obviously, you can talk about this when you, when you talk about this further. But we put in there that after you have the land use approvals, it is an opportunity for Takah to come back in and say that they'd like to use some money for the capital building of the facility. But for the most part, it's kind of saying, go get donors. Go get donors that are going to make pledges. We're going to set some money aside that we're going to have some kind of provisions for the trust account that is going to govern how that trust account works. But basically, we want the money for operations. Bruce, do you, should, do you want to add anything there?
No, I think you're doing a great job.
So...
Can I ask you just one second?
Seriously, I'm, you got it, Susan.
I'm not done with the trust account though.
Okay, just let me, just let me ask. That's all very interesting.
Yeah.
But when this comes back, could we have at least, like, one sentence of a very clear definition of the purpose of the trust account? Because I read all this a few times, actually. And I still couldn't say in a sentence what it is, where it's coming from, et cetera. So Jenna.
What's it based on? That's a summary of where did this come from and what is it based on?
And you can, I mean, it's clear, you can bring it. This is, we're going to see this again, I know.
Okay, okay.
And we really can't.
But these are just referral questions.
Yep, no, that's good. And then the idea was at building permit that we take a billion dollars, subtract whatever we've contributed to the trust account. And that sum of money goes into the trust account too. So there's just a big reward at the time of building permit for more money. At CO, we turn over, the trust account goes from the town of Basalt and they actually hold the trust account. And at that time, then, the Rita money that comes in, that's attributed to the arts campus at Willets, that part of the Rita can go to them. And then the next piece is just the Sopris Meadows Real Estate Transfer Assessment. Again, this is another place where you could get deep into the weeds. But the new townhouses, Park Modern in Willets, we applied another real estate transfer assessment that's separate. And it's, we call that the Sopris Meadows Rita. And houses that sell over $600,000 have to contribute another 1%. And that goes for art throughout the town of Basalt. So that money has a lot of, less strings than the arts Rita money has. And it has the advantage that it can be used for the performances that are not on the center. So we were suggesting that, you know, $5,000 be applied from the real estate transfer assessment this year. And then during the budget, they could ask for more.
Can I just interrupt?
Yep.
Just say, I think that some of these things we might want to bring back to a work session-type thing and kind of get them in bites. Because we really do need to open the public hearing and then we can come back to us. But there are people who have been sitting here and...
Yep, and that's a good place for me to stop anyway.
Okay. So we're going to open the public hearing at 7:04. And anybody who has comments regarding this item are welcome to come up. We need you to get on a microphone. So we might have you scooch in somewhere. And if we could limit your comments to three minutes, that would be great. And if you want to come up, just state your name and... Anybody? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, Nancy Lovendahl again, speaking as a commissioner of BPAC. And we realize that one of the most vital roles we can play for you and it's in our fundamentals of our organization that we're advisors to this body. And we've reviewed what it would really take to foster an arts economy in Basalt. And we feel that any support you can give Takah and the art base and BPAC will really give you a trinity of different spokes-on-the-wheel, to say, to create more vital downtown excitement, economic vitality. And so we would like to advise the council to support Takah.
Thank you. Anyone else? Going, going. Thank you. Oh, can you come up, Jenna? Thanks. Find yourself a microphone? Easier said than done. How are you?
Good, how are you all?
Good.
Good. I just wanted to reiterate what Ryan said just to say it from my own mouth as well, that we're excited to collaborate. We wish Takah great success. And success breeds success. And we hope to work together to build an arts economy. And that the language of the bullet points, I think we, Ryan and I both feel that we can further clarify those in ways that make sense for both organizations, including scheduling. But yes, I agree. And thank you, Susan and Ryan, for paraphrasing.
Thank you, Jenna. I have personally seen them skipping down the street, holding hands.
Theatrical.
Okay. I'll close the public hearing at 7:05 and a half. Susan, what question are we trying to get answered right now?
Well, we're really looking for, we were looking for your motion to support the staff recommendation, which was really kind of those six items and that we had. James, do you want to flip back to that? So we were just basically kind of looking for, yes, you feel that based on the information that you have available, that Takah can move forward with the lease and, you know, Jenna, this schedule kind of works for you and...
Okay, so do we need to have anybody have any concerns with the six items? Are these the six items you're talking about?
Yes.
Any of these six items that...
On the financial?
On the staff and Eller's recommendations?
Yeah, I do.
Okay, Bernie.
I'm not comfortable with this trust fund concept. I don't understand it. I hear that town would be giving up control of tax receipts. That raises a red flag with me right away. I would look for a different mechanism to achieve the same result. I am concerned about basing everything on pledges. I would look for a mechanism that cash matching from taxpayer funds happens when pledges are converted into cash and that we have cash-for-cash matching. We could take pledges into consideration to some extent. I don't know that we would look at them dollar-for-dollar. Maybe my concerns can be explained away. That's something I would look for in a workshop or... But, you know, we got this Thursday and we've never seen this concept of a trust fund before Thursday. And it's a fairly significant financial tool for this whole process. And I would definitely say, and we want to look, this report suggests that staff make up certain parameters and benchmarks. And I want to see those in writing so I understand what they are. The, I agree completely with Ryan Honey that the temporary space and the pop-up performances will provide us way more information than in other five or six studies of theoretical information that some outside consultant could hope to generate. And I think it'll provide energy and enthusiasm in the community for the effort of Takah and make it real to the community. So I want to be very supportive. But at the same time, I have to do my fiduciary duty overlooking the wise spending of town funds. And I would say I want to see, as Jen had suggested, that your, your plan, your game plan for five years, and see your benchmarks for performance and have staff look at them and come back to a recommendation of what might be reasonable benchmarks for financial performance. And I think those are the checks and balances that I would like to see.
So Bernie, can I just ask you to flip back here? Because what staff is asking us for is to support the staff and Eller's recommendations. So there's a portion of five that says, address the creation of a trust fund. Are you suggesting that that come out?
At this point, I would because I can't support that. I support going forward and clarifying all of these things so that we can look at them. I do support forward movement.
Jackie, can I comment?
Yeah, Tom, I'm sorry.
The trust account concept, Bernie, is really very simple. It's a separate bank account controlled by the town to, as a repository for the Rita funds to be used for the purposes determined by the town and the expenditure of the funds out of that account. So the town is not giving up any control unless and until it decides to do so. It's just a bank account.
Well, I'd like then, Judy, to explain, don't we have many internal accounts similar to that concept that we keep? Although the money may be commingled, we have them accounted for completely separately?
We can do them either as a restricted fund, which is what the Rita is now. And I actually keep those in a separate banking institution, then our general fund. But certainly, we can discuss setting up an escrow. We've done that in the past with different subdivisions. If they've had a large item on Heinrich, we did that when we were waiting for some items to be corrected. So it's, we can discuss it, but we can make it work.
Okay.
Can I jump in for a second?
Joe.
This is Bruce.
Yeah.
So I've been following this discussion and Bernie's concerns. And I would just second what Tom and Judy just said. You know, this idea is similar to what's called an indenture of trust on a bond issue. And it's really a contract between the bondholders and the issuer or the people that are using the bond proceeds. And, you know, that usually involves a corporate trust department and a bank. And I don't think we need to be that involved and go to that level of detail and expense. But the idea is the same in that you're just really detailing out the contractual relationship between the town and Takah and the mutual expectations and the terms and conditions under which you can actually, you know, put the money in the account first. That's, that's the first step, right? When they meet these milestones. And then how and when the funds can be dispersed from the account for appropriate and eligible purposes. So, you know, we don't need to call it a trust account. And maybe that is too formal and has connotations that we don't need to have. But it's the idea of having just a mutual, mutual understanding that's fully fleshed out between the town and Takah as to how the money's come into the account and how they go out of the account, both in hitting milestones and over time. So that's really what I was envisioning. And we can certainly work with the town staff and with Tom Smith to flesh that out a little bit more, or a lot more.
Yeah, I would be more comfortable calling it a separate accounting account or something. Yeah.
Okay. Is that good, Bern?
That's good.
Okay, Jen, then, Auden.
Okay, so just to reflect on Bernie, it sounds like collectively, we're all, we all want to learn more about the funding sources, the Rita's. Number six, schedule a funding resolution concurrent with consideration of lease. It seems like it would be wise for us to unlink the two, to allow more time to consider one separate from the other.
Did you say that, Jen?
To unlink the concurrent consideration of the lease with the funding resolution. Separate them. Not have them lockstep on schedule so that we have to decide the funding on May 23rd. It's very large amounts that we're considering here. We need to be very creative. We need to be very creative. We need to give due diligence and really look at it. Regarding number five, the funding resolution and the requirements, I think that's really important, and part of that, I would love to see what staff comes up with, as well as what TACAA's requirements, what they think their requirement should be. I definitely have some thoughts that I'd like to put in there, and I can do that at a later time. And then as well, I'm not comfortable with the resolution for the council to consider using the Sopris Meadows REDA. TACAA has already had access to $230,000 from the WTC, the Willetts Town Center REDA, and it's a lot to consider, opening up another REDA to one arts organization, when there are multiple arts organizations in this town, and to have the equal support. So it's just going back to the ACG report, the art face needs a new space to house its programs, exhibits, and services. The question remains, can the area support two major cultural capital projects? That's a huge question, and a lot of that comes from support from the town. We know that arts need support from our towns, from our government, and we need to be aware of all the different capital programs coming up, and what their interests are. And that's it.
Thanks, Jen, Auden.
So I think what we're being asked to do tonight is to agree to move this forward. There's a lot of minutia in there, and a lot of good questions that I think staff would get at. There's been a ton of due diligence on this project. I'm comfortable saying, yes, let's move forward, and at our next meeting, when there is a resolution on how we're going to deal with the funding, let's discuss it then, but let's keep chunking the thing forward, because I feel like so much work has been done, and I worry about a level of frustration with the slowness of the process. So I'm going to support a resolution to move this forward, per staff recommendation, which would include the comments tonight from council.
Is this actually a resolution?
Not tonight.
Okay, all right, okay.
To move it forward.
Right, okay. If I could just kind of circle back and try to bring in what everybody else has said, I'm changing the beginnings of some of these sentences to draft this, or do, so that it doesn't sound like we're approving a resolution. So on number one, I would say the council as a whole is, has concluded that the art center is reasonably feasible. I would say that. I would say that we should draft, further clarify performance standards in the lease, so that when we see them on first reading, they're a little bit more fleshed out. I think when we, I don't have any problem leaving these dates like this, because the truth is, is if on first reading, there needs to be a lot more work, it'll be tabled. Other points should be addressed, either in a lease or different documents. That's a move forward on a draft kind of thing, as Auden is saying, this is not concrete. On five, I think we should, I think we should go ahead and do this, but I would really like to see five especially addressed in a, in a separate work session.
I was just thinking that at the next meeting, instead of having a resolution, that maybe we just kind of have a more work session discussion, because...
Okay, and maybe flesh out some of these, or maybe don't give us the whole, you know, fire hose at once. And the question that Jen was asking, is it necessary to open up this other REDA in order to do the pop-up performances?
You know, it's really a question for, I mean, we could bring that up at the work session.
Okay, could you bring that back as well? And also clarify the schedule of the funding resolution in general.
Okay, and really, yeah, okay.
Just, I think all these things, I think, as Auden said, I would, I would ask for a motion to move forward on all of these things and bring them back to us for further discussion and, yeah.
Well, don't you think we've given staff direction?
I think they want a motion.
They want a formal motion?
Well, they're going to spend a lot of time on this.
Do you have a proposed motion?
You know, I just think that...
No formal motion written for this.
That's what I thought.
So you can come up with your own, and my suggestion might be to approve, to direct staff to proceed in accordance with the recommendations, subject to the amendments that Jackie has just stated.
I can do that.
Would you so move that?
Yeah, Mayor, I move that council move forward on the art center at Willetts project, per staff recommendation, as modified and amended by council.
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor? Aye opposed? That was some hard work.
Thank you all.
Harder than usual, even. Thank you very much for your patience and work.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you, Bruce.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Bruce.
Oh, man. Ryan? That needs to stay for later. However, we can have this. Thank you, Auden. Auden Schindler, thank you.
Thank you, Auden. Parry all that load.
So, Mayor, I'm going to recuse myself from the next agenda item. Thank you. You guys were going to move on, because these guys have been waiting. Our next item is second readings, public hearing and second reading of ordinance seven of 2017, ordinance of the town granting special review approval for medical marijuana center at 174 Midland. Dr. Lent.
We do have Norm and Laura Clayson, the property owners, here this evening with us.
Good evening, Mr. Davis Clayson.
So this is a public hearing and a second reading of an ordinance on an application submitted by Neat Things LLC on behalf of the property owners. It is for a special review for a medical marijuana center on the first floor of the Three Bears Building at 174 Midland Avenue. As the council discussed at first reading, the council approved a code amendment to permit retail marijuana stores in the C-2 Zone District as a permitted use, and also previously amended the code to allow for medical marijuana centers as a special review use in the C-2 Zone District. The applicants have made a license application for both the medical marijuana center, as well as a retail medical store. The medical marijuana center is proposed in the back portion of the building, to be accessed off the pedestrian alleyway, and then the retail portion is in the front of the store adjacent to Midland Avenue. So the medical facility is the subject of this special review application. As was discussed at the first reading, staff and the P&amp;Z reviewed the application against the code standards in section 16190 regarding marijuana facilities, and staff and P&amp;Z have requirements in your draft ordinance that the medical marijuana center not be, have product and accessories visible from the adjacent pedestrian way. There's also a condition in there that a window display plan needs approval by the technical review committee prior to going forward, and there are requirements that they can't have testing or cultivation in the proposed facilities. There's one minor change to the ordinance since the first reading that the council approved. It's on page three of your ordinance. There's a clarification in there that signs can be attached to the building, one sign of up to six square feet, pedestrian alleyway, which is the code requirement. The P&amp;Z recommended approval with the conditions that they have in the draft ordinance, so this evening, staff would recommend taking applicant's comments, taking public comments as it is a public hearing, and providing council discussion. Ultimately, if you're comfortable that it ensures compliance with that section 16190 of the code, the council could approve the ordinance. Do you have additional comments?
No, I think, as I said last meeting, I think everyone's heard about as much as they want to hear on this, so I think you're all up to speed on the information.
Thanks, Norm. Okay, this is a public hearing. We will open the public hearing at 7:25. Is there anyone in the public that has any comments regarding this application? Hearing none. I'll close the public hearing. Go to council for comments or motion.
Mayor, I'll move that the town council approve ordinance number seven, series of 2017, on second reading.
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I abstain from voting.
Okay. All right. So seven B, is that a different one? It is a, did we really mean to put this one in the middle of those?
I guess so.
Okay. All right. See you later. Can we switch these? Is that okay to do?
Yeah. Do the, get them over with?
Can we switch? There's, there's really one that should maybe follow this one versus bringing the storage units in between?
Oh.
Well, we, we did advertise that, well, the public hearings are not set until 7:22 on that one. We may want to, 7:25.
So we're past that.
So we're past that. Thank you.
Yeah, we're, so we're, we should...
Hey, you're good.
Okay, so we're good. Sorry. So let's, so then somebody remind me to go back to the storage units?
I will.
Will you please? Okay, so really, eight A, is a public hearing and consideration of retail marijuana license for 174 Midland.
One's medical, one's retail, one's...
Oh, yeah, what is retail and eight B? Are we doing these both at once? Whoever is helping me, okay?
Yes, we're going to open the public hearings on both at the same time.
And so we're going to do public hearings on both. The other one, eight B, is consideration of medical marijuana for 174 Midland. Okay.
Correct. So on the heels of having approved finally their special review approval for a medical marijuana center at 174 Midland, I pick up the portion of the licensing for the retail and the medical marijuana. Staff comments and applicant comments, staff will make comments, and we ask for applicant comments and open the public hearing for comments, followed by council discussion and a determination. Staff would also just note for the record that the recommendation, there will be an amended recommendation at the end of my little comments here, which we will discuss.
Okay.
Briefly. So basically, we're running this similar to that of a public hearing or licensing process for liquor, basically the same type of thing. So the town has noticed the public hearing, it's been posted on the property, and it's been published in the local newspapers. The town council can make the following findings and determination as to the good moral character of the applicants. Fingerprints have been submitted to CBI, and we have, have not come back with any criminal histories on either of the applicants. The town council...
You didn't look far enough back.
We're still digging.
The town council shall consider the facts and evidence adduced as a result of its investigation, as well as any other facts, the number type and availability of the type of marijuana establishments in the town, and any other pertinent matters affecting the qualifications of the applicant for the conduct of the type of business proposed. No other marijuana licenses are in the immediate vicinity of this proposed center and retail store. The town allows two retail and two medical. Currently, we have one retail store based on the South Side of Basalt. The town council has the authority to refuse to issue any license for good cause. The term "good cause" means that any applicant has violated, does not meet, or has failed to comply with any of the terms, conditions, or provisions of the Colorado Medical Marijuana Code, or the Colorado Retail Marijuana Code, or any rule and regulation promulgated pursuant thereto. We have no reason to believe that they have done so at this point in time. They have supplied us with everything requested as staff. The comments by all the referral agencies are listed. The police department has listed theirs. I won't go through them one by one. The planning department has listed theirs. The building department and the fire departments have listed theirs. So now I'm down to the staff recommendation portion. The town manager, the police chief, and myself met with the applicants earlier today, and have come to a separate recommendation. The recommendation remains the same, although at this point in time, staff recommendation is to remove the end sentence of the recommendations, from the word "and" subsequent to full approval by the state. Remove both of those sections from the recommendations. The reason for that is that it's not staff's responsibility to require a state approval at this point. It's a given. The state, they cannot open, they cannot function without state approval. We don't put this into our recommendations for liquor licensing. It's a given there as well. Davis, did you have any?
Madam Mayor and members of the council, the clerk has covered all the main points we had discussions with the applicants today about, and I agree completely that it was, it was a little bit of overkill on our part to include that, and as she's noted, they can't open a store without the state license. We're first in line, the state, we give the state a letter, so they can do their licensing process, so staff is totally comfortable with eliminating on both recommendations that last portion from "and" to the end of the sentence.
And so at this point, I would ask if the applicants have any comments to add or to make before council this evening?
My only comment would be that it has been a long road. I think a lot of things have been discussed and learned, and come to an understanding. I think that I'd like to thank members of staff, James in particular, has been very kind working with us, Chief Knott, has been very, very kind, and Pam has been very patient to get us to where we are tonight. Thank you. I appreciate it. I really do.
Thank you for acknowledging the folks that work here.
Work hard.
Yes, they work hard and are spread thin. Anyway, well, they've worked equally, they've worked equally as hard to get to this point, probably harder than we have. Okay, if that's all your comments, okay, this is a public, can I do both public hearings at the same time, Tom?
Yes, please.
Okay, so this is, public hearing is being opened for both the medical marijuana center and the retail marijuana store at 174 Midland Avenue. So if, are there comments from the public regarding these licenses? Okay, hearing done. We'll close the public hearing and go to council for a motion.
Mayor, I recommend a motion to approve the license application for medical marijuana and retail marijuana sales located at 174 Midland Avenue, units 101 and 102.
I'm sorry, could I ask that the licenses just be noted separately, because they do go to two different locations in the state, and I'd like to...
Two motions?
Please. So first one for medical?
Here we go again.
Sorry.
Recommend approval of a motion to approve the license application for a medical marijuana center located at 174 Midland Avenue, unit 102.
Councilor Kettlewood, could I suggest pursuant to the modified recommendation of staff?
Subsequent to all conditions noted by the investigating agencies and the modifications made by staff.
Second.
Okay, further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed?
I abstain.
Okay, now I'll go recommend a motion to approve the license application for a retail marijuana store located at 174 Midland Avenue, unit 101, subsequent to all conditions noted by the investigating agencies and the modifications made by staff.
Thank you.
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I abstain. Thank you.
Thank you. Very, very much.
Thank you for sticking this out with us.
Good luck.
Thank you.
All right.
Now we're going back?
Back to mini storage.
To...
Back to mini storages, thank you. And that was seven B, right? See, did I tell you? I forget.
You're back to seven B.
Just Jen, no, come back. Jeez.
Oh, yeah, we need Jen.
Oh.
But we need her in here. Are you suggesting that we...
It's a funner thing, Jen. Yeah, every time we do the body bag.
Okay, we are now on item seven B, public hearing and second reading of ordinance eight of 2017, and ordinance of the town extending and increasing the corporate limits of the town of Basalt, County of Pittkins, State of Colorado, for the Basalt mini storage expansion pursuant to the provisions of the Colorado Municipal Annexation Act by annexing to the town land contiguous to and not embraced within the present limits of the town of Basalt, known as the Basalt Mini Storage Property, and portions of South Side Drive and Few Lane, granting approval of initial zoning for the property and approving a preliminary final subdivision application and final site plan review to construct 81,000 square feet of mini storage. Welcome.
Thank you.
Hello again, James.
We do have Clay Crossland here this evening from David Hill LLC.
The Clay Crossland.
Jeff Orsillak from Lipton Warner, representing the applicant group. This is a public hearing and a second reading of an ordinance... Uh, this is a public hearing and a second reading of an ordinance that would approve of the Basalt Mini Storage Expansion uh, for annexation, final site plan review, uh, and preliminary and final, uh, subdivision review. And it is for the construction of approximately eighty-one thousand square feet of an expansion to the Basalt Mini Storage. Uh, the site, as was seen at the first reading, uh, is located, uh, just to the south of the existing Basalt Mini Storage on the west side of South Side Drive, adjacent to the Grange Ranch property. Uh, at the last meeting, the council approved the ordinance on first reading, uh, and discussed, uh, revised architecture, uh, the landscaping plan, as well as the Birmingham plan to help screen the facility from South Side Drive. Uh, the council seemed generally satisfied with the changes that have been made since the sketch plan approvals. Uh, and since first reading, staff and the applicant have met, uh, to discuss the amount of the transportation impact fee. Uh, that was an outstanding item at the first reading. Uh, staff also went back and researched, uh, other commercial annexation approvals that, uh, we dealt with in the past. Uh, so we've drafted a memo that's attached in your packet addressing the transportation impact fee. Uh, and it, uh, basically suggests that, uh, we've required a one dollar per square foot, uh, in prior commercial developments, uh, that are annexations, uh, such as the South Side Four, uh, commercial, as well as the commer- uh, CCRC, which was Continuing Care and Retirement Community, uh, that was approved on the Stotz Mill property. Both those, the developments had a one dollar per square foot transportation impact fee. Uh, so staff has amended the ordinance since first reading to propose the one dollar per square foot fee. Uh, and as I indicated, it's based on prior annexations and what we've done, as well as the fact that the mini storage, uh, use uh, is less, uh, traffic impact than regular commercial or industrial use. Um, the applicant has indicated that they could live with that one dollar per square foot fee, but you'll hear from that applicant, uh, as part of their comments. Uh, additionally, we've got some slight adjustments to the draft ordinance, uh, that we have, uh, provided at your seat. They, uh, these are comments that came from generally the applicant's attorney. Uh, specifically, there is a correction of a typo on page three of the ordinance, uh, to reference the Colorado revised statutes. Um, there's also some revisions to condition number twenty-five and exhibit B, uh, to indicate that, uh, it's a construction license for the trail that's gonna be on the south side of Few Lane. Uh, it's just some terminology change, we're using the appropriate terminology for a construction license. Um, and then, there's a correction to the legal description to add in the right way that's being annexed on Few Lane and South Side Drive to, uh, clean up some prior annexations that.
Is this just, would you characterize this as housekeeping?
Housekeeping items.
Okay.
I wanted to identify them for you. Um, as was noted at the prior hearing, the P and Z recommended approval with the conditions that we have in the draft ordinance. Um, and so, tonight, we would suggest that you take applicant comments, uh, ask any questions if you may have of staff and the applicants, uh, and then take public comments as it is a public hearing. Uh, ultimately, if you're comfortable with the conditions, the council could approve the ordinance. Clay, do you have some additional discussion?
Sure, James, thanks, um, again, Clay Crossland, managing partner for Davidco LLC. Uh, we didn't come prepared to do another presentation, I think we've done that, uh, as, as much as you wanna see. We are down to the final item as, uh, James explained regarding the, uh, South Side Traffic Impact Fee. Uh, we have agreed with staff that a dollar per square foot, uh, is more in line with, uh, what we think is reasonable for this type of use. Uh, I think the categories before, uh, especially in the residential, you had three different categories. We pointed out to staff that industrial and commercial was all lumped into one when really there, different uses needed to be looked at, just like, uh, the council had looked at on residential. So, I think we came to a reasonable compromise, uh, we accept that and except for questions, that's our presentation.
Okay. Um, I think we'll do the public hearing and then go to council and see if anybody has, thank you for that and thank you for working together to get this, um, completed. Okay, this is a public hearing, we'll open the public hearing at seven forty. Is there anyone in the public that has any comments regarding this, uh, application? Hearing done, we'll close the public hearing at seven forty and a half. Okay, uh, council, do you have questions of the applicant or staff? Comments? Motion?
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I move that the town council approve ordinance number eight, series of two thousand seventeen on second reading.
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Whoa.
Pretty much.
Ready to go.
Wow.
Thank you.
Can life really be this good?
I don't know. I think we're gonna get bogged down now.
Stop, no, you're gonna fix it, you're gonna fix sodded down? Did you say sodded?
No, I didn't, but they did.
Yeah. All right.
You're just sowing seeds.
The next item, I believe, is item nine A, a resolution of the town approving the Basalt River Park Landscaping Improvement Project and authorizing staff to enter into a contract.
Susan Phillip. So, I have, Chris Laraman is here coming in, uh, and we also have Trevor Lamont, who's our parks foreman, uh, and Boyd is here also. And so, can you guys come on up all the way to the?
All the way to the front.
I, I, I just kinda wanna, uh, introduce this subject by saying, what's in front of you is, is a resolution approving the park uh, and then the town council has to select the option that they wanna include in the resolution that authorizes the contract. Uh, but before I start, 'cause I'm gonna turn it over to Chris Laraman from SGM, I just wanna say that the, the council started out with a pretty simple request, you know? Let's landscape an acre of property, uh, come back with a seed and a sod option. And as you can see, uh, that, that really grew, uh, the project grew and so that's kinda what you're looking at today. And we expanded the project in a couple ways. One, um, we, some of the improvements really have to do with, uh, addressing a nicer entryway, a more permanent, uh, access way off of Midland Avenue, doing a handicap parking space, uh, allowing some electricity in the park. Uh, and some of it had to do with the access because we know that a lot of utility trucks, uh, enter the park, um, particularly the Basalt Sanitation District and we wanted to do this in a more permanent way. So, you know, just to say that what I think Mark's initial vision, uh, in his cost estimate of a hundred thousand was, was, you know, maybe uh, more feasible, but we, we grew the project and we're still recommending, uh, we, we're giving you three options, but we're recommending that the town council, uh, approve the entire project. Um, and why don't I just go ahead, um, Chris, and turn it over to you a little bit? Um, SGM ran the bidding process, uh, and they can kinda explain what's in front of you.
Hi.
Hi.
So, in your, uh, packet, there's two things, there's a memo.
James, you wanna just bring up that, just so you have it ready in case?
There's a memo from Susan and then there's also a memo from myself and it was our team that put it together. Um, as Susan said, we, we can talk about, feel free to ask any questions if you wanna, if you have any questions on the details of what we bid. But we bid basically an acre of landscaping that's irrigated, with entryway improvements and electrical improvements. We bid it with two options, one was, was with six inches of topsoil and seed and the second was with sod, with six inches of topsoil. We competitively bid it, uh, following Colorado State statutes for two weeks. We had three bids and the bid tabulation is attached in there. Um, the low bidder was Tamrell Excavating and, and, and those folks are the ones doing the current project out in the river park right now. They also completed the West Sopris Drainage Improvement Projects last year and we have had a good experience with them, they do good work, their change orders are minimal and, uh, usually, I think our relationship is pretty strong with them. So, we have recommended that you hire them for whichever option you choose. Um, one thing you need to understand, we got three bids, the first two bids were pretty close and depending on how you look at it, if you pick one option, the second bidder might be the low bidder. They turned in an incomplete bid at the time of bid, they turned in a bid schedule, but they didn't have the proper forms and all that. They turned the proper forms in an hour later, but at a staff level, uh, not including the town attorney, we decided the bid was not eligible, to be fair to all three bidders. So, we are recommending you enter into a contract with Tamrell for whatever option you pick. We presented three options based on your criteria. Um, the cheapest option for you is to, to landscape the whole one acre is to do, to topsoil with seed. Um, the, we listed pros and cons in there, the biggest con of that option is you really won't have fully functional mature grass till next year. You'll have it maybe by this fall, but it won't be fully germinated, fully protected, so if you want, the second option is the sod option, if you want to have a fully functional mature lawn this summer, then that's the option you should consider. It's, uh, thirty, forty thousand dollars difference in price, so it's your most expensive option. The third option that we gave you was an option with a hundred thousand dollar budget, we cut out the entryway, we cut out the electric and then we reduced the sod and reduced the trails, just mathematically to make that number. Um, so, we're not making a recommendation of what option you guys should pick. You guys, you can ask us questions or whatever and tell us your pros and cons on that. You basically need to figure out how much money you wanna spend on it and then we'll tell you which option.
And you'll spend it.
That's right. What we, the recommendation we do make is to select Tamrell or, uh, whatever project you decide to pick.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, I had one question. Early in this process, it was represented to us that if you plant seed, in the long run, it is more water efficient. Um, I've heard maybe that wasn't the case and, versus sod. So, I'm wondering if you would comment?
We, uh, to write that recommendation, we did more research and determined that at the end of the day, there's no difference in water after it's established. The one, the one major difference that we discovered with talking with local landscapers and just doing our own independent research was the one thing you can expect, the biggest difference is, i- is at the start, you're going to see a lot of weeds with the seed and topsoil option, that you're going to have to spray for weeds. You will not have to spray as much with sod, you will have to spray some with sod, but with the, so if it's not properly managed, you could see a weed patch out there. Once the seed or sod is matured next year, you won't see any difference in water usage.
Thank you.
Thanks for that. That seemed like an odd thing.
Yep.
Not a scientist, scientist or anything, yes, odd.
I just have some concern about spending all this money on the project and then something happens and the pro- the property gets developed or turned into a park or whatever happens and it means that work gets undone. So, what, what are, Mark, what's your thought on that?
Wouldn't get undone, that's gonna be a park no matter what. Um, there may be some additional lines that may be run, electrical, maybe some plumbing lines, I don't know. But, that's doable.
You're not concerned that, say, there'll be a vision of, hey, let's put in X, Y, and Z that basically undoes all the work we've done and?
I don't see that happening.
I think, you know, it's, it's a publicly owned parcel and once it becomes a publicly owned park, it would be like any other park. If they had to come and run utilities, they'd have to put it back like it was. Or, you know, just like if it went across your yard.
Right.
They'd have to put it back like it was.
I don't think the impact will be that significant. I do have, the disparity on the irrigation blew me away. It's Savage was three times less than Tamrell and five times less than Daley. Any, can you speak to that at all?
No.
Somebody screwed up probably, huh?
Uh, contractors, depending, contractors put their money in different places depending on how they build it. You know, they might wanna front load a project to get money in front end, they might, maybe have pipes sitting in their yard, they can use that, I don't know.
And then, you're gonna make sure that it's not over one acre because I believe in speaking with Rick, that if it's over an acre, we have to get a stormwater discharge permit?
Yeah, actually, I, I was, I meant to talk to you about that more, but that's, it has come up, so one acre kinda works here, but.
Stormwater discharge permit is not a big deal, it's a permeable.
Okay, just asking.
Stormwater management.
And the, the project is over an acre, the grass alone is an acre, so it's, I don't know what it is, it's acre and a quarter, probably something to that.
I was just asking to make sure that we didn't get in trouble, that's all, I don't care if it's over an acre. And then, I believe, the vehicle access road that's gonna be used, what, Susan, three, four times a year, maybe?
Well, Public Works, of course, will use it a lot more than that, I mean, the Basalt Sanitation District will use it probably about that.
Why does Public Works have to use it?
They'll use the.
They'll be using it to service the, uh, trashcans and doggy pots and, uh.
Can't do that by walking?
Oh, yeah, we can do that, we could, we can take.
I just think that we're going way overboard on that road.
Biggest thing with the access was, is we were, anytime we have a project going forward, we have to take into consideration eighty-eight and that's.
I agree with that, that part of it. The road itself, though, doesn't need to be real conspicuous, I think it needs to.
No, we, we wanna keep it, that's the whole thing, to keep it as natural as possible.
Well, there's a lot of money in here for the road.
Is that the fifteen dollars?
Yeah.
Yeah, I was kinda shocked at that one.
So, we need some, some cinders out there, it's like I said, minimal use for water and sand to get down there and check their manholes.
So, the vehicular access, it's totally an option, I mean, we put it in as a vehicle-worthy trail. So, when the Basalt Sanitation District brings their back truck, which weighs, uh, twenty thousand pounds or something like that.
Not gonna sink in the mud and, yeah.
Won't destroy the landscaping, so, the choice the town could make would be to either reduce that to something like a permeable pavement or something like that, or you could do nothing. And you take a risk of when they do service that line, that they imprint, I mean, it leaves kinda permanent tracks in the grass.
I understand.
So, but you could say, well, we're not worried about that and not put it in. Um, and I don't know what the, I have to look at the square yard, I don't know what the square yard cost is.
Well, we want some type of service because they guaranteed that they would stay, I mean, they're, but working with a sand district was a lot of work and, I mean, not, you know, a lot of discussion. And, you know, they'll stay on the road as long as there's actual facility there.
There's a road, they'll use it. Our intent was to just make a wider trail, that structural, that you could take a truck on, so when they do get on it, they just use.
So, something twelve feet wide or?
It's eight feet wide.
Okay, that's even better.
It's the minimal amount to get a, a full-size, uh, their back truck.
I think that answers my question.
Can I ask you a question or you? Is there any such thing as any potential for field engineering, not that I know what I'm talking about?
Value, value.
Value engineering, when, out in the field, does that ever happen on little projects like this?
Well.
Or is there any potential that you see in these line items at all?
You'd have to tell us something you didn't want.
Okay, so that's not really how it works.
They didn't go with eight hundred dollar sprinkler heads, did they?
No, they worked directly with Trevor to get exactly what Trevor wanted.
Okay, if I could just speak briefly, I know Mark and I have talked about this and we actually talked about it today and, um, he was gonna come down and talk to Susan and, long story short, he had items that made his, um, idea a hundred thousand dollars instead of two hundred thousand dollars. He kinda bought into that maybe we need to do these other line items to do it right. And, given that we have money budgeted in post for specifically this park and given that people have been waiting and waiting and asking and asking, my thought is, I would go with the recommendation, I trust Mark's thought on this, if he would've said, no, this is crazy outrageous, but he doesn't, so, I feel like we should do it.
Do we wanna, do we wanna pony up the extra thirty for sod?
I think so.
To get?
I think so.
We could use it this summer.
I think almost, I mean, I'm just guessing, but if this were my own place, by the time you have to deal with weeds and weed killer and all that and that, you're adding labor in, I don't know how much more labor you're dealing with. I don't know how much more labor you're dealing with to deal with.
What do you think, Boyd?
Yeah, I mean, it's left up to you, but it's, it is gonna be more labor intensive with seed adoption.
Yeah.
And I called Boyd and asked him from an environmental impact standpoint if there was a pro or con between the seed or the sod. And all the products that Public Works uses are, uh, approved by the Roaring Fork Water Rivershead.
Same stuff that Gary uses. It's all approved, Pick and Eagle, State.
Yep. Um, so, I don't have a, that was kinda my beef is if there's an environmental impact or a water usage impact, either way, I'm, I'm over the, I'm so excited. I can't even kind, find the words, um, to actually improve this parcel of land, this park that the town, um, owns. It is the centerpiece. It is a gem. It's gonna be amazing, um, whatever we do. And yes, there are things that can change down the road, um, but those are unknown. There's just too many unknowns and we've waited too long. And I'm, I'm very, very receptive and supportive of either the seed or the sod.
What's the finance question on this? We allocated a hundred K? We allocate more? Do we have to?
We have seven hundred, I think, in for the park.
Yeah.
I see, okay.
And it's already in the, in the budget. When we put in the CIP, we actually put a eight hundred and seventy-five thousand for twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen in for the, um, project. And then in the budget, we had, you know, less than that, obviously, but it was the Mark's kinda initial motion that was kinda the limiting thing.
Okay.
Before we get final, final, I said, and I almost forgot, uh, if there's anybody in the public that wants to comment on this project, please come up to a microphone.
Yeah, I, I would, um.
Hold on. Get on the mic then.
Hi, Rick Stevens. Um, you know, not with any intent or any purpose, but I somehow found myself with forty years of experience in this, uh, line of work. And I was asked to take a look at the bids and the, um, unit prices and the quantities and the scope and the specifications. And, uh, as a municipality, I think this is an opportunity for Basalt to do something that is, is, models an improvement. Um, this is a lot of money. Auden's point of, well, what could happen down the road? The issue of having a eight-foot-wide road needs to be understood a little bit better. It's really about a road prism. It's about scarifying twelve inches of soil underneath that road that gets built on six inches of road base that's compacted and crusher fines, which are a particular type of material. Um, my concern is that the quality control and the quality assurance on this project is maintained throughout. Um, there's specifications for the topsoil quality and there's other things. And Chris, correct me if I'm out of line here, that Basalt has not done on its own in a long time. Um, and I think that Schmizer has done a great job in, in specifying the scope and acknowledging the grades. I know there's, um, a future post-improvements, including banstand and children's beach area and wetlands protection. The reason I brought up with Mark earlier, the stormwater management, there's a, an, a statement in there that says that the existing protection for erosion control and so on can be utilized as it stands right now in place. Um, in the past in that park, there was a stormwater management plan that I still think is in place with the state of Colorado. That's something that needs to be checked out. And, um, in order to spend the public's money and bring the most valuable, val- value to the site, I think that there needs to be an extra effort spent on making sure that, that, uh, that project gets built properly. There's a lot of eyes on it and there's a lot of concern that we are adjacent to the river and we have future, uh, development potential and future park to be built. So, that's my two cents. I think that watching, uh, what's going on over there, they seem to be organized and, uh, doing things in a professional way. So, I'm not concerned about the contractor issues. I'm more concerned about getting a great product at the end of the day, so.
Thank you.
Thank you for letting me speak up.
Yep. Thank you for hanging around to throw in. So, on, on his comments, who is gonna be bird dogging the quality assurance and quality control?
Along with Trevor.
Okay, okay.
And, you know, Rick brings up some really good comments and we've been concerned about this as well. Um, you know, we've already, uh, looked at the topsoil that they're promoting to use.
Trevor, do you wanna make sure you're speaking into the mic?
Close to the mic.
We always like to yell Mike at anybody whose name isn't Mike.
Topsoil's tough to specify because it's usually mined from somewhere. So, we're, I mean, you can get the stuff in Orlando, but we didn't want that. So, it depends on what project's going on as to where you can get it from.
Okay.
And they have found a local source for it with the stuff that we've used in the past. Trevor's worked with the irrigation guy. Uh, we didn't put a lot of specifications for irrigation because we wanted them to work correctly with Trevor. So, he got exactly what he wanted as far as the layout and everything else. So, it'll be a team approach. The stormwater management plan, I, I need to research that and see if it's still active. If it's not, we'll have to get one. But, you know, we have been monitoring the project that's out there and they've done a good job of keeping the river clean and using the wetlands to filter any construction activity in addition to the stuff they installed out there.
Good to hear. Okay. Um, other council comments?
Well. I mean, honestly, to me, looking at all the bids and we just did a bid on a whole other projects, these bid costs are, are good. My biggest question was this vehicle access trail. And I'm really concerned about having an eight-foot road still through this project area. But I need to go through Boyd and staff to really say, hey, in the end, if we're gonna have truck traffic through this with the sanitation, it'd be fine to have at least something that looks like just a bigger trail through there. And so, that, that's my concern is is that, you know, I've seen the sanitation use a lot of our trails throughout this area and most of the trails are built pretty, probably what this spec is, twenty bucks. Um, you did it by a square yard. I don't know, but that's my only concern. Otherwise, I look at the costs and I look at what people would like to see out there and I'm, I'm, I'm pretty good with this. I mean, to me, I'd rather have something done well, something usable. And, uh, besides that trail that seems to go right through the property, you know, kinda has almost a buffer to what's gonna happen up above someday.
Yeah, Jen?
I'm good with the bids. I do have questions and concerns regarding the furniture that has been mentioned that, um, it's not included in the bid, um, but it's stated somewhere in the packet that.
We just said it wasn't included.
Yeah, these costs do not include construction administration or the park furniture will, which will be ordered. I'd like to see the park furniture or have a, a cost estimate. Is it under five, yeah, like what, what is it? I think we'd all like to know that.
We can, we can give you that.
Okay, great.
Okay, well, um, I wanna thank this council for staying really focused on this. I think this is, you know, a, a community amenity that really shouldn't wait any longer. I'm very happy that, that we're, we're gonna do this.
Are we gonna go sod or are we gonna go seed?
Well, somebody's gonna have to make a motion.
I, I'm gonna go ahead and make the motion to approve using, uh, um, resolution fifteen, series of twenty seventeen, and approve option two and granting Tramell, Trum-.
Tamrel.
Tamrel, the contract price of two eighteen, seven forty. For sod.
Okay.
Which is approximately thirty thousand more than seed. But I think the sod will outweigh the maintenance weed spraying and.
Is there a second or?
Second.
Okay. Can I finish with my thank yous for my further discussion? And also thanks staff for hanging in there with us. And we had, we've been pushing this to the top and you guys have got twenty things, all of you, that are on the top, so, thank you. Okay, we have a motion in a second. Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Woo! Ooh, ooh, ooh! Rick, come on up. God, we did something. We finally did something.
We finally see some green.
I know.
Good.
Okay, um, the next one is. Hi, Rick.
Good evening.
Is resolution sixteen, a resolution of the town approving an agreement between the Town of Basalt and the Roaring Fork Conservancy outlining responsibilities for public improvements for Two Rivers Road and Old Pond Park. Susan?
Okay, well, we've talked a lot about the Roaring Fork Conservancy in the River Center over the last, um, year. And this agreement has to do with kinda outlining the responsibilities on Two Rivers Road and Old Pond Park. And I did not put this one on the, um, projector, but I think everybody's familiar with this, um, exhibit C. This exhibit C was part of the land use approvals and it indicated which improvements were to be, uh, paid for and done, uh, by individual parties. And, um, so basically, the Two Rivers, the main line of Two Rivers Road and the Old Pond Park improvements were to be done by the Town of Basalt. When we did the budget for twenty eighteen, for twenty seventeen, we thought that the Roaring Fork Conservancy would be making those road improvements in twenty eighteen, so we did not include them in the budget. Um, so, most of the agreement really has to do with, uh, um, the town's commitment. We have cost estimates. We're basing, um, the town's responsibilities on the cost estimates, which actually we think will probably benefit the Town of Basalt. And that's the a hundred and fifty-five thousand, three hundred and eighty-six dollars. This is basically saying that the town will pay those funds, but will pay them in the first quarter of twenty eighteen. Um, you know, and of course, because this is a resolution, there's a caveat that we're directing, you know, staff to include this in the budget and to include it in amending our capital improvement plan uh, because we can't really authorize twenty eighteen funds by doing this. But, uh, it's kinda setting the, the framework for that. The second piece of it is the Old Pond Park, uh, improvements. And it just made sense to everybody that this is all be done at one time, particularly because with the construction of the River Center, we're kinda boxing ourselves in. So, for us to go back later and make those improvements would be, uh, very cumbersome and difficult. Plus, um, just having one contractor kinda put it together. So, we're asking, uh, their, uh, general con, the Roaring Fork Conservancy to really kinda run that project. The town would pay for it, but we would bring back to the town council the contract for the Old Pond Park improvements when we had it.
Can I ask you, you might've said this speedily.
Sorry.
What is the language in the CDOT restricted funds? What does the language say?
Uh, I don't have it. It, it.
Just approximately.
It, it's basically was for, um, the Two Rivers Road for maintaining and rebuilding Two Rivers Road.
Do we get money every year from seed?
No, we got, I think it was close to a million dollars when we took over CDOT. We've been kinda taking that restricted fund, um, down over time. And there's like three hundred and thirty thousand dollars left in that fund.
Okay.
And we're rebuilding the road because this, we're taking this from a, you know, rural cross-section to urban cross-section.
Okay. Jen, did you have your hand up or just?
I do have a question.
Okay.
Um, of the one hundred thousand dollars that, um, we started with in partnership with, with RFC, how much of that remains to date? And will this be a lot of two?
We have about thirty thousand dollars left in that account. What we've been doing, I think we explained it earlier. We've been running some of the, um, expenses associated with the River Center costs. You know, the, the consulted fees, SGM, for example, reviewing it, Tom Smith reviewing the legal bills. We've been running that through that hundred thousand. There's thirty thousand dollars left.
Is there language that says that it has to go solely for consultants or it's just?
No, no, we just made that kind of agreement because we thought it benefited the Town of Basalt not to, uh, in the long run is to get those, uh, charges kind of accounted for. And it was, it was better from our standpoint. So, that's why we did it that way, rather than us coming in the end and having another hundred thousand dollars worth of infrastructure that we were, um, you know, kind of, um, you know, responsible for. So, you know, the reason that we did it is we thought it would benefit us. Um, what the Roaring Fork Conservancy has kinda asked us is the remaining amount of money that's out there, could they use it for building permit fees or for, uh, contract administration for the project? And we said not for building permit fees, um, but would like, we would, we'd like to see a proposal for the contract administration, construction administration.
Susan, I just have a question. I, I'm not really good at looking at things like this.
Yeah.
But are there as many possible parking spaces as possible that we could squeeze into this?
Yes, if you remember in the land use approvals, we did a lot of different wor- a lot of, lot of work and a lot of different options on laying out parking spaces. We were kinda boxed in because of the wetlands, just the wetlands, uh, that are in the area and then the kinda floodplain, uh, considerations.
On the other side.
Yeah, so there, and the, yeah, exactly. And so, we added, in the final hearings of the land use approval, we added, um, additional spaces. Um, James, I don't have the pointer, but we added a lot of spaces that are towards the entryway on the west side and we added like one or two spaces on the north side. And then right in there, we added, uh, a bunch of spaces.
So, in places where it's skinny, you could go parallel, right?
This, places where it's skinny, that's the parallel spaces on the other side.
Okay.
Um, and we really exhausted when we were in the land use approval, um, you know, the ways of adding additional parking.
Okay.
And we met Boyd's concerns about how the snowplow comes in and out and we addressed those concerns, so.
Snowplow drivers. All right. Thanks, Susan. Um, questions? Motion, comments?
Going back to the consultant fees, Susan, that's going to be a separate conversation?
Yes, and it wasn't just consultant fees, but it was like the, um, you know, I can show you what the expenses are. We can have a separate conver- I mean, this isn't trying to address that hundred thousand, um, but.
I just see if we budgeted money for this project and there's remaining money, why not utilize it if we're looking?
You mean the thirty thousand?
Mm-hmm.
You mean, use the thirty thousand towards the road improvements, you mean?
Because they're both town responsibilities.
You, you, you know, you could. Um, I think the answer is, is it wouldn't really be in the spirit of what that hundred K was. It was kinda extra money, but we could, we, you, we could have a separate conversation and if you felt you wanted to bring it back. But the, the road improvements, a hundred K, you know, there was the purchase of the property.
It's okay, it's okay. Just wanted to, yeah.
Yeah, if it's, if it's unrestricted funds, then.
Then it's, funds are funds in my mind.
Anybody else? Anybody still here for a motion?
Mayor, I move that the town council approve resolution number sixteen, series of twenty seventeen.
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Good.
Good.
Thank you.
I would like to, I just wanted to take a quick second to, um, thank the town council, thank the town staff and thank the Bas- Basalt Police Department for, um, helping us to pull off our largest ever frying pan cleanup. We had two hundred and seventy-five attendees at the cleanup this year.
In fact, we have to talk about changing the venue because we have so many people. It's a place other than the river.
Special thanks to Greg for letting me get on the, the horn on the police car to address the crowd. Thanks to Jackie and Susan and others for showing up that day and particularly, um, Susan and James for, um, helping out a lot, even though it's an event that we host. it's an event that we host, you guys all really help us host it, and I think it's become more than just a conservancy event, but really a, a town event.
It's huge.
Wonderful, so, thank you.
I met a new friend that day.
Great.
Yep. Thanks, guys.
So, thank you.
Thanks, you guys.
Bye-bye.
Good luck.
See you, Jim.
Okay, let's see. Thank you, dear. Ten A, public hearing and first reading of ordinance nine of twenty seventeen, and ordinance of the town rezoning the property at four forty-one East Sopris Drive to R three TN, and granting special review approval to legalize an accessory dwelling unit, four forty-one East Sopris Drive.
Thanks. We have Dave Wilkins here this evening, who's the property owner.
Dan, right?
Dave.
Dave, okay.
At four forty-one East Sopris. This is a public hearing and a first reading of an ordinance that would approve of a rezoning for the property at four forty-one East Sopris to the R three TN Zone District, as well as a special review to legalize an ADU that was constructed over the garage. As background, the applicant received building permits to construct living space over the garage at his house. Jim Wilson in the Building Department noted on the plans that they couldn't have the second kitchen, because an ADU is not permitted in the current zoning, which is R three. The applicant constructed the second kitchen, and then, so the Building Department at final inspection gave the applicant the option of either removing the kitchen, or coming in with an application to rezone and do a special review for an ADU. The applicant has proposed the rezoning application to the R three TN, as well as a special review. In evaluating the application, as with the other ADU applications that we've seen in recent, this year, basically, staff and the applicant, and, and the P and Z felt it met the goal in the master plan of promoting locations for ADUs to be integrated into the existing neighborhoods, as well as the goal of encouraging these types of units for workforce housing, given the housing circumstances that the valley's in at the current time. Staff and the P and Z also, in evaluating the application, felt that it's consistent with the character of the neighborhood, and that the property complies with the R three TN zoning that would be proposed, with the exception of the minimum size for the ADU. The ADU is three hundred and ten square feet, and there's a minimum size in the housing guidelines of four hundred and fifteen square feet, so it's slightly under that. The housing guidelines do, however, provide the discretion to the town council of reducing the minimum size if it's felt appropriate. Staff believes that the unit is a pretty livable unit, it's got a separate entrance to it, and the applicant is proposing deed restricted property such that one of the two dwelling units would be owner occupied pursuant to the ADU regulations, and by code, that would make it exempt from the parkland dedication fees as well. So, we do have a condition in the draft ordinance that the applicant be required to deed restrict it within a hundred and eighty days, and before he could actually get a CO on that space. So, this evening, staff would suggest hearing applicant comments, taking public comments as it is a public hearing, and then providing council discussion. Dave, do you have any comments to add?
You pretty much summed it up pretty well.
He's good at that.
Yes, he is.
John?
Are you happy about this?
Yeah, I'm fine with it.
Okay, good.
What was the reason for the parkland dedication exemption?
The, the way the code is written for ADUs in the R three TN Zone District, if you deed restrict the unit, the property such that one of the two units is owner occupied, it comes along. I'm sorry, resident occupied, it comes along with the automatic exemption from the parkland.
Okay, thank you.
All right. This is a public hearing, so we'll open the public hearing at eight twenty. Is there anybody out there that has any comments about this? Okay, close the public hearing at eight twenty and twenty seconds. Council? Comments? Motions?
Do you, did you, did Mr. Wilson make you remove the kitchen, Dave?
No.
To begin with, it's still in place?
Yes, it is.
So, he's, is he gonna be involved at all to go up and give you your finals and all?
He already has gone up and given me the finals, as far as everything's up to code and this stuff. Now, it's a matter of going through all the administrative stuff.
All right, good. That's all I got.
All motion, the town council approve ordinance number nine, series of two thousand and seven, on first reading, continue and set the public hearing in second reading for May twenty-third, two thousand and seventeen.
Second.
Further discussion?
Just that this is the kind of thing we want to support, it's infill and density, we like it.
Yep, and it was already there. That's okay. All in favor?
All right, all right.
Opposed? Thank you, Dave, for coming in.
Thanks for waiting so long.
Yes. I wondered. You were here a long time.
It's all right. Thank you, guys.
Yeah, thanks.
And I'm gonna be leaving now.
Okay. Our next item is an executive session. Would someone like to make a motion? It's a long one.
Mayor, I'm. Six dash four oh two, four B, more specifically to discuss potential litigation Scanlon versus Town of Basalt, determining positions relative to matters that are or may become subject to negotiations in accordance with.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
And I need to get a ruling from the town attorney as to whether or not this session, session needs to be recorded, or what portions need to be recorded.
Okay, for the record, the, none of it is open to the public, of course, your town council will be in executive session. The first item mentioned in the motions, the discussion of potential litigation Scanlon v. Town of Basalt is exclusively for the purpose of privileged attorney-client communication and legal advice from council, and Alice Powers, counsel for the town, will be on the phone for that. So, that portion of it pursuant to the open meetings law does not need to be recorded. After that, the, while there, while it remains privileged and confidential executive session, the discussions of negotiations regarding Ryan Mahoney and personnel matters, Ryan Mahoney, need to be recorded, but not, the tapes aren't available to the public in the absence of a court order.
Okay. At this time, we'll shut off the sound back there, and I'm gonna go ahead and switch tape to an executive. Oh, all right, great. Okay, we are back in public session. We have been discussing the items that we referenced that were executive session items. The last one we discussed was the personnel matters in accordance with CRS twenty-four, blah, 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 specifically the Ryan Mahoney negotiations, and we continued those negotiations, and at this point, we need a motion.
Well, there's a, yeah, you have an agenda item, approve employment contract.
Yep, so I will motion that we table approval of employment contract for the town manager candidate.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I make a motion, we adjourn.
Second.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Well, I'm gonna call, I'm gonna call Phil in the morning. I'm gonna call Phil right now.